Somehow you printed it as a PDI, did you see?
Those are really nice plaques.
Yeah, those are cool. Is it District Two?
No.
I have, uh, I've got five, uh, thirty-four. So at this time, I call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order, and call on Commissioner Ruben Donarosa to lead us in an indication, please.
We all stand. My last prayer is, uh, City Commissioner, dear Jesus, thank you for the opportunity to have served our city and citizens of District Four. As your, as your Commissioner for the past six years, bless the next elected City Commissioner that will take this place, that their heart will be in the serving of our city and citizens of District Four. In Marks 1045, the verse says, "For even the Son of Man did not come expecting to be served by everyone, but to serve everyone and to give his life as ransom price in exchange for their salvation of many." In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. Thank you all for being here, and this time we're gonna ask for citizen communication. Is there any citizen communication?
I have none, ma'am.
All right, none have signed up. The first item on the agenda is the presentation of a proclamation proclaiming Saturday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day. So I think we have some folks who would like to ask to come on up here and spread out a little bit, but if you want to come up and, uh, Juneteenth proclamation, come on up, come on up. I think we have, uh, the others lead is Miller Wilson, Barry Anderson, Latoya Colley, Lydia Richardson, Rosen, Gerald Flowers, Lonnie, Gloria Davis, Tony Dixion, and Samuel Brain. So. Welcome in. Thank you all for being here. As I present this proclamation, uh, in honor of Juneteenth, President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation became official on January first, eighteen sixty-three, slaves in the Union occupied Confederate states were held in bondage and ruthlessly oppressed, suddenly freed men, women, and children whose inalienable rights and liberty no longer was snuffed out through the hand of intolerable slavery. For the news of President Lincoln's victory in order to not reach these men and children in Texas until June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, with the arrival of Union soldiers met by Major G- General Gordon Granger, and whereas Juneteenth is a celebration of the end of slavery and the birth of the Martinius Temple, that as it grows and expands, fills the fissures and cracks of inequality that threaten our vital foundation of freedom. Over the years, recognition of Juneteenth has also grown through the work of Al Edwards, an African-American state legislator. Juneteenth became an official state holiday in Texas in nineteen eighty, and the first commemoration of emancipation afforded official state recognition, and whereas General Granger's announcement on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five called for absolute equality. We know that such a vision was hardly complete back then as it is today, and we still have hard going ahead in racial prejudice, bigotry, and oppression. On the Emancipation Proclamation on Juneteenth marked the end of slavery, they also marked the beginning of a new journey towards freedom and justice for people of color, a journey which has lasted too long, and the nation and the community must successfully reach the end of that journey now. Now, therefore, I, Chris Boswell, of Maryland City of Harlingen, for your proclaiming, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and issue this proclamation in commemoration and celebration of Juneteenth, and I call upon and encourage all citizens of the city and region to come together, not only in celebration of Juneteenth, but to renew our commitment to strive for a nation and community without racism and oppression. And I want to present this to whoever wants to receive it on the hand through.
Yeah, just do it.
And. Lonnie, have some break, you know, working for the last year.
We want to thank the mayor again and the City Commissioner of Harlingen for recognizing Juneteenth. I don't know whether you have been looking at the news, it is now just not a Texas holiday anymore, it will be celebrated throughout the United States. And this all came from, uh, Harlingen, and we appreciate so much that we're being recognized here in Harlingen. And, uh, the thing that, that's very impressive about this, this is not the first time, we've done this for no reason. Thank you again, Mayor, thank you again, City Commissioner.
All right, thank you all. Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, thank you all for being here tonight. So. So if we could have the soccer, uh, soccer team up for, the softball, softball teams in, the softball team up here. So item, item two on the agenda is special recognition of the following Harlingen's football team and coaches, the Harlingen Cardinal varsity, Danny Soccer and, uh, Pepper Calmout, the head coach. So I'm asking, uh, Mr. Pettis, who recommended this, I'd like you to come up here and help me present.
What, what, why don't, you all, maybe you all want to stand behind him?
Yes, we'll all take, we'll all take a picture, but let me present the flag, let me present the flag for, and, uh, this is in, in recognition, uh, City Harlingen congratulate Harlingen's, uh, Lady Harlingen Softball Team, twenty twenty, twenty-one, reaching for three-two-six-A, co-district champion, reaching for, my district champion, reaching for area finalists. And we have the names of all the players on this plaque, and we want to congratulate you all for a great season, what a, uh, what an achievement, a remarkable achievement, uh, for each and every group of players and the coaches, so I'm gonna present those to, here's the cap.
Yes, and this is for Coach Diaz, Mike Diaz, uh, for his accomplishments as a, as a softball coach, Texas Girls Coaches Association, the number four, winning his coach in this day in Texas, won five hundred seventy-six wins, and he only, despite being top three, for your determination to succeed underscored by your confidence in the heart of Lady Harlingen Softball, softball team, twenty-three to four, which brought them to a triumphant, um, winning season. And this is presented to you by the mayor and the City Commission on the sixteenth day of June, twenty twenty-one.
We're here, Alexis Soseido, Soseido, uh, currently Martinez, Mr. Robbins. The pressure's kinda.
Yeah, you all, you all want to come on, try.
Couldn't see you better.
Yeah, we learned, we should do what he must say, this works out better.
Thank you.
Lonnie, get a picture. So, now we can have the prime Colonel, the. Oh, Colonel, there you go, get back. Hello, Diddy. All right, well, this, this is, uh, a great recognition award in honor of, of Harlingen's Lady Cardinal Soccer Team, and this is a recognition award that City of Harlingen congratulates, Harlingen Lady Cardinal Soccer Team, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, third to six-A undefeated district champion. By the way, players selected for the all-district team, and with us tonight, uh, players, we have Jacklin Vargas, the Harlingen varsity girls' soccer team captain, Rebecca Jimenez, uh, varsity girls' soccer team captain, Maya Quinones, thirty-two-six-A, all-district co-offensive MVP, Orin Powell, thirty-two-six-A, all-district defensive MVP, Grace Reed, thirty-two-six-A, all-district co-utilty player of the year. So congratulations to. Thank you, and representing not only the school district, but the city of Harlingen, and, uh, out there, so it's just great to, uh, congratulate you all here tonight, and it's just one of, a wonderful thing. So, uh, Mr. Pettis, you gotta recognize the coaches.
And this is for the, um, Coach Garban, um, for your recognition for the thirty-two-six, uh, thirty-two-six-A, all-district coach of the year, for your determination to succeed underscored by the confidence in the heart of Lady Cardinal Soccer Team, which brought them to a triumphant winning season, undefeated season. Um, given, presented on the sixteenth day of June by Mayor Boswell and the City Commission, uh, sixteenth day of June. Congratulations.
People are pictures of the commission standing behind you. Congratulations. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing now, is your motion approved, the minutes is presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, sign. Motion carries, items four A through F, or the consent agenda, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, sign. Motion carries, item five, presentation by Cassandra Consiglio regarding the operation of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Cassandra, welcome.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, I really am excited to come here and talk to you all about what the Convention and Visitors Bureau has been up to and what we plan for the future. Um, this is actually our newest logo, so this is Visit Harlingen, Texas. Um, we are a new team at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, new logo, and we're very excited to be moving forward with all of the good things Harlingen has to offer. Um, so, uh, the Convention and Visitors Bureau is here to market and attract tourists to the city of Harlingen, Texas. Uh, we collect hotel motel tax as a city, and that hotel motel tax is used to market and prove, um, like, the murals and everything for the city of Harlingen. So, um, that is what we market, and we really market all of the hotels and our attractions.
Is that supposed to say increase? Right? Is that correct?
I was wondering if we were gonna catch that, so.
I didn't, thank you.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if it's me, or.
I'm sorry, I did not notice that. Um, so of course we have everything in Harlingen. Um, we have the most park space per capita, so in the, in all the cities in the valley, so we really promote especially our newest, um, Long Sea Hill Destination Park and our all-inclusive parks, that's something that we promote a lot. Our Harlingen Convention Center, seventeen thousand square foot ballroom, in case anybody here needs to book a quinceañera or a wedding, don't forget it's there. All of our city buildings are available, and that's something that we promote. Our free museums are a great attraction, of course, people coming into Harlingen, they don't have to pay. Our Tony Butler Golf Course, Iwo Jima Monument, the murals, the downtown district, the Bass Pro Shops, Valley International Airport, birding, of course, birding brings around nine hundred people, uh, in the month of November for the week-long birding festival, but in Harlingen you can bird all year round. And of course our standout events, including Blues on the Hill, Freedom Fest, Fall Festival, and all of the community events that we have during the year. Um, so we employ a twenty-four-seven marketing strategy, like I said, Harlingen doesn't necessarily have a season, uh, you can come here birding all year long, you can go downtown shopping all year long, you can visit our outdoor facilities all year long, so we really like to push everything twenty-four-seven. Um, it's sunny here around three hundred sixty days of the year, and we like to tell people to get outdoors and enjoy Harlingen. So we really market in Harlingen, um, in Texas, in the United States, and northern Mexico. This is a copy of our website, we're with our new logo and updated colors. At the top we have a bar, a bar there where it had COVID-nineteen updates, so if anybody was planning on coming to Harlingen, they didn't really know what the status of this Cameron County was, we let them know exactly what was open, what was not, what was in, what was being enforced. We do have a huge contract with AJR Media, which is the parent company for Texas Highways Magazine, Texas State Travel Guide, AAA Magazine, and Texas, uh, TorTexas.com. So we have a lot of ads going on throughout the year and coming on next year as well. I'll show you some copies of the ads, coming slides. So this is a TorTexas website, if you can see in the top left-hand corner, it says free brochures, order now. We get about twenty brochure orders a week, and so we fill those. Our department basically gets their name, address, email, we send them, um, a little package of our brochure and like whatever's happening like that month during the year. And those people tend to be, they actually come and visit. So TorTexas prides itself on, not only do they have visitors, but they have visitors who take action, they actually go to your city. This is what you would see if you visit Harlingen website through, uh, TorTexas, it's a little overview of Harlingen, and then on the right-hand side, things to do in Harlingen, events in Harlingen, attractions in Harlingen, will link you right back to our website. So hopefully everything is a full circle moment for us. Um, our social media has changed to Visit Harlingen, which is a lot easier, and that's basically what all the CBBS in Texas and the United States are doing, they use Visit and then their city name. Uh, we are, actually, we have around fourteen thousand four hundred likes. When I started with the CBB, we had maybe like three thousand likes, so we've done very well there, and we are number three in the pages like us. Um, South Padre Island has around five hundred and twenty thousand likes, so we're trying to get there, but you know, might take us a couple of years. And then Explore Victoria, Texas is two, uh, big, and we are beating Visit McAllen and Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau as well. Our, um, basically people who follow us and like us more are women in the ages of thirty-three to forty-one. Uh, during the pandemic, we were still trying to get people, um, in Harlingen, keep their spirits up, not necessarily come visit Harlingen, but there's things to do in Harlingen. So these are some of our campaigns, so Harlingen Strong was something that we were really promoting during spring of twenty twenty, and then obviously Get Outdoors, so, uh, we were really pushing all of our parks, all of the beautiful outdoor spaces that we have to offer here in Harlingen. These are copies of ads that we have in magazines, uh, so TML Town and Country Magazine, and Welcome Home RGB. Welcome Home RGB is a magazine that has a print component or an online component to it, and it is dedicated to winter Texans. So these, uh, Welcome Home magazines are distributed all along the West Coast and all of our feeder markets for winter Texans, and of course here in the valley as well. Uh, we were actually, um, in the Hemispheres Magazine, which is the United Airlines in-flight magazine. Uh, we were actually, um, in the Hemispheres Magazine, which is the United Airlines in-flight magazine in February of twenty twenty. Uh, the United, uh, rep came down and we showed him what was going on. We had a big meeting at the Chamber of Commerce with all the cities listed here, and, uh, there's the Convention Center up in the top right-hand corner. And then we have another beauty shot of Harlingen there in the bottom right, and then our airport on the top right over there. So it was a really great, uh, opportunity for us to be in this United magazine. This is another ad that we put in, um, some birders magazines that we do throughout the year. And right now, the big thing is road tripping. As you all know, everybody in the state of Texas, road trips, usually they go, um, they can take a day trip or they stay overnight. We're trying to capture them to stay one or two nights, that's the goal of, of us, is for them to actually stay in Harlingen. So this is one of our ads. And, um, throughout websites, as you, you know, there's banner ads, this is one, a copy of one of ours, Visit Harlingen. Then we like to show the Iwo Jima and our murals. If you go to the airport and, uh, you go to the gates, they have rotator ads. We do have one, and it's a Hugh Ramsey Nature Park, and it, um, it's a rotator ad, so we have around three spots, and there's only seven available, so we have a good amount of spots in those rotator ads. They're also in the carousel when you pick up your luggage. Uh, this is a digital media ad that we, uh, would put in maybe a birders' websites and throughout our social medias. Um, and some staple sporting events in Harlingen are the Harlingen Marathon and the Jalapeno One Hundred Marathon. Each of these, um, the Harlingen Marathon is a Boston qualifying marathon that, uh, has been produced by Footwork Start to Finish, but the city of Harlingen will be taking over. Of course, it did not happen in February twenty twenty, but we're hoping to bring it back next year. This, uh, has over a thousand participants, and these participants come from all over the world, from New York, from Mexico, just to really get their Boston Marathon qualifying. The Jalapeno Run Hundred is a bicycle ride, it's a hundred miles of the coast and back, and, uh, is put on by Bicycle World. So those are two big events that we have in February. Um, this, the CBB and the city of Harlingen, we participate in TML, and we have our booth for this year. This will be the fourth year that we go, and we promote the city of Harlingen and everything it has to offer to all the city commissioners and participants of the Texas Municipal League Conference. This is October, twenty twenty-one will be in Houston. Um, this year, we will be helping the Public Works Department, we're gonna go to the conference, and we're gonna promote Harlingen, because next year, in twenty twenty-two, the Public Works Conference will be here in Harlingen. So the host city for the upcoming year goes and promotes what's going on, and so I will be there with our brochures and, and just to really tell people everything we have to offer at the conference and what they have to look forward to. Um, the CBB partners with basically everybody that we can, because we really want to get our name out there as much as possible. Um, right now, we're actually partnering with the South Padre Island CBB and the Harlingen Police Department for the Texas Police Games twenty twenty-one. These games were supposed to be held last year, but they got moved to this year, and there was nine hundred and forty participants, and that's just including participants. They brought their family, their brothers, uncles, aunts, everybody. I was at registration on Sunday at the island, and there was a lot of people looking forward to come to Harlingen, going to the parks, going out to eat, seeing what, everything of Harlingen. And, uh, we are listed in the South Padre Island Chamber of Commerce listing, they have a listing of the valley, and we have an ad there. We are also, uh, we partner a lot with the Chamber of Commerce. I am, uh, we rent offices out of the Chamber of Commerce, and so we have a lot of ability to speak to the members on every occasion, every lunch and learn, every breakfast. We're always there participating and really just telling them about our events. Um, I am part of the Regional Tourism and Travel Advisory Committee and the Marketing Subcommittee, which is the Regional Tourism Committee for the city or for the valley. And they actually named themselves Explore RGB. So this Explore RGB is a website that has very in-detail description of what you can do in every city in the valley and how to get around. So if you go to the website, which our website is linked to it, um, they will tell you like, oh, if you want to go to Harlingen, you can, and you want to go outdoors, go to McKelvey Park. And they took really beautiful videos of McKelvey Park, and then if you land in Harlingen, this is how you get there, and they show this beautiful video of the airport. So that's a part, this is a committee we're a part of. Uh, I'm also a part of the Harlingen Marketing Group, so we work closely with all the marketing heads of the EDC, the airport, the Port of Harlingen, the Chamber. And we really wanted to get together to make sure all the marketing departments know what's going on and how we can help each other, make sure we cross-promote and make sure we are just really getting the word out there. Uh, we also work closely with the Mayor's Wellness Council. Um, I'll tell you a little bit about how we're actually putting that in action right now. Um, so I'm actually also part of the marketing group for the Healthy Harlingen. So if they need help in any sort of marketing for the Healthy Harlingen Group, I give ideas, I tell people, we do, we print signs, we might, uh, go out there and actually just help them. And we, uh, partner with the EDC for some desk shopping ads. This is a magazine that is in Monterrey and McAllen, Edinburgh, all those cities here in Harlingen, I mean, in the valley, as well as northern Mexico. And we partner as well with the Harlingen Hotels. They are the, actually, the ones that, um, we need to promote the most, because again, the hotel motel tax is, we, we receive that from them. We always are, you know, promoting the Harlingen Convention Center, so, uh, the beautiful building is on marketing, is in the Meeting Professionals International website and the Texas Travel Alliance. So these are two websites that meeting planners really go to, so we have ads in those year-round. And we're really excited that we're bringing back Freedom Fest. Thank you, guys, um, for allowing us to continue to do this event. I know last year we were not able to, but thank you to you and the city manager, we're able to bring this festival back to the citizens of the Harlingen. It is a free event that is happening July third. I hope every single one of you can join us, invite your friends, your constituents to join us for this free event, July third from four to nine. And Mark Chestnut is the headliner, we'll have a car show, kids activities, food trucks, a beer garden provided by the Chamber of Commerce, and a dog park.
And the site of this?
Excuse me?
The site?
Oh, it'll be at the new Long Sea Hill Destination Park. So we really want to showcase our new park, and we want to show that we don't have to rent tents anymore, we have beautiful pavilions and beautiful sidewalks for all the, all of our citizens. And so, like I said, I was partnering with Healthy Harlingen, and in that, we decided to kick off Healthy Harlingen again with the Freedom Fest five K. So this is a five K will be happening the morning of Freedom Fest, and it is five dollars to enter, and you get a medal. And, um, there will also be a social bike ride that morning. They'll be showing Pilates, yoga, boot camp, and food vendors at the Long Sea Hill Destination Park. I really wanted to show the community that you can go out there and do these activities for free. There is no cost to going and go and, you know, exercise out there, go use the pavilions, go just enjoy the park space with your family. So this is something we're working on with Healthy Harlingen for the morning of Freedom Fest, so it's gonna be Freedom Fest five K in the morning, social bike ride, and all the healthy activities also happening. Um, and we are moving forward with all of our events, so in twenty-one, twenty-two, we'll have the Freedom Fest in July. In September, we'll bring back Blues on the Hill. October, uh, hopefully, we have Halloween on Jackson Street. November, a Fall Festival. In December, I think we're going, uh, Lighting of the Royal, and then we'll, we want to do something very fun at the new Long Sea Hill Destination Park as well. And then January, we will do our Winter Texan Appreciation Day, and in February, Harlingen Marathon Haller, uh, in Jalapeno One Hundred, and in May, Blues on the Hill. And we're back to the beginning, we'll keep going. So there's a lot of events happening, uh, at least once every month from here on now. And I really encourage everybody to attend. Um, so our hotel motel occupancy rates for twenty twenty, January twenty-ten, we're doing okay, sixty-two percent, February seventy-two percent, we were doing really well. Then, of course, March hits, but we did not take that big of a hit. Um, and April forty-one point nine, and then December, or in the twenty-twenty-one, uh, they're rebounding very well. March, we have seventy point six, and April sixty-six point four. The numbers for June come out tomorrow, so I'm sorry that we, we missed it, or, or the eighteenth, so we're a couple of days short, but I can go ahead and email that to you guys. But we're doing a lot better than last year. Our Harlingen Hotels are doing well, and they are just happy to be moving forward and getting people back in there. Um, so coming up, we have, we're, I've reached out to an architect, we're working on some big standing letters, and hopefully, we can put those somewhere in the city that people can come take pictures of, and it will just be something fun that says Harlingen. Uh, we will be printing out maps, a lot, sometimes, since we do have winter Texans coming, they want a physical map, not just Google or anything like that. So we're working on printing of those, and we want to have more merchandise, so more apparel, shirts, hats, cups, fun stuff like that. And, um, speaking of the future, I know a lot of people have a good memory of Rio Fest, which is, um, a three, a two or three-day festival that the city of Harlingen used to hold, and now the city of Harlingen owns the name of Rio Fest, and this is something that I just wanted to discuss with you guys, we will take action on it later. Uh, but we, I think it's time for us to bring back a two-day festival for the city of Harlingen, and this would be a paid festival. So it would be basically, um, all hands on deck, we would have to work with some volunteers, and hopefully, a production team to bring this, uh, to fruition. Um, the Rio Fest is something, like I said, holds a lot of good memories for people, and Harlingen needs to bring back a really strong staple event for the future.
Do you know, do you know why they stopped doing it?
No, I'm not sure.
I mean, it might be a good question to ask.
A function of money.
Well, I mean, it, no, it's just important to ask to make sure that...
We don't commit the same issues, I understand. Um, I would like to do in October of twenty twenty-two. I do not want to interfere with any of the staple events that happen around the valley in March, you know, Life Stock Show or Border Press or any of those, and then it, it might be too warm, and so we're gonna wait until next fall. Um, that's it, thank you. Is there any questions from?
Any questions for Cassandra?
I like the pictures.
Thank you. I know we have beautiful images of the city if you ever need them.
Okay, great, great presentation, Cassandra.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, all right. Item six is a public hearing to consider ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow adult business tattoo shop and general retail district located at sixteen-ten Mid Lane Drive, bearing legal distribution lot seven block one, amended platte lot one A, six and seven, Walmart subdivision applicant Miguel Angel.
Mayor, city commissioners, uh, good evening. We have a proposed tattoo shop in a commercial plaza on Mid Lane, um, Drive, that's where the, um, Grand China Restaurant used to be, uh, close to the Walmart, the Sony's commercial. That's the proposed, uh, tattoo shop. That's the site plan for the entire, uh, complex. That's a picture from Mid Lane Drive, and that's a closer view of the building where they, they're proposing the, the tattoo shop that requires a special use permit. Aerial photo. Staff recommends approval, uh, subject to, uh, state permits, maintain the parking and landscaping and compliance to the requirements from the different city departments. The planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on June ninth, and no one spoke in opposition to the SUP request, so they approved it unanimously with a four to zero vote.
All right, we have a public hearing, is there, did anyone sign up for the public hearing?
No, ma'am.
Then we'll, um, move, then there, we have, we have the public hearing, no one has signed up, so then we'll go to item B, which is consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, uh, for a special use permit to allow adult business tattoo shop in a general retail, uh, district located at sixteen-ten Mid Lane Drive, bearing legal distribution lot seven block one, amended platte lot one A, six and seven, Walmart subdivision number two, and ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance mending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to Miguel Angel Lopez to allow an adult business tattoo shop in a general retail district located at sixteen-ten Mid Lane Drive and dealing with related matters.
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in second to adopt the ordinance, is there, uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Go to item seven, which is consideration of possible action acknowledging the acquisition of Trusted Capital Group, TCG, by Hub International Limited. Gabe?
Mayor, members of the commission, um, Trusted Capital Group, or TCG as we're known, um, is a company that helps the city administer the, the four oh one A retirement plan. This is a retirement plan that we offer to all employees hired after two thousand and seven, except for firefighters. Uh, the company has been acquired by Hub International Limited, and this, uh, action merely acknowledges that the city has been notified of that, of that action.
No changes?
No changes to the plans or everything, we're maintaining the same, including staff.
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries, item eight, consideration of possible action to approve payment for the working capital fund for the Convention Center to BCLR Convention Services LLC in the amount of one hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred thirty dollars and eighty-nine cents. Gabe?
Mayor, members of the commission, um, we have received a request for payment from BCLR for one hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-nine cents. Uh, you may recall, last year, the city increased the working capital fund by five hundred and eighty-six thousand, nineteen dollars to assist, uh, uh, company with, uh, issues that we're facing during, during the pandemic. Uh, the fund has a balance of five hundred and three thousand and seventy-two dollars and eighty-six cents in it. So staff recommends approval of the, of the invoice. Um, the, the internal auditor has completed the review of the, uh, convention center and only found one discrepancy, which I understand has been addressed already, so...
Well, I just want, I just want to clarify that, uh, he initiated the audit, and so what we'll do, once he completes the audit, we'll reconcile before the next payment.
A wish made. Motion for an approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution support of funding requests for President Joe Biden's American Jobs Plan Infrastructure Bill by Hidalgo County and Hidalgo County Trainers District Number One for upgrades to the Hidalgo County Master Trainer Systems.
Uh, mayor, commissioners, good afternoon. Uh, this, in essence, is a letter of support, uh, from city Harlingen in favor of the Hidalgo County Trainers District. In Hidalgo County, um, the, uh, various projects that they have in play are, again, regional in nature, and they would have a, a regional impact or benefit to the city of Harlingen. And for that reason, city, uh, staff is requesting, uh, recommending approval.
Motion for an approval. Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, I think this is, uh, thank you, this is good, we need to be helping each other with our projects and, uh, speaking, uh, with multiple voices, uh, to, uh, the capitals in Austin and Washington DC, so, thank you. Item ten, discussion to establish a strategic planning session on July twenty-sixth, all day, and July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, half-day or alternate dates. Dan?
Mayor, commissioners, um, so I would like to propose a strategic planning session over a day and a half to sit down with the city council so that we can set a new set of goals, establish new goals the staff can, can work towards. And you know, we have made some really good progress, uh, with respect to the goal that we established in the comprehensive plan, and the actionable items within the plan itself and the priorities that were established by the city council. I gave each of you a copy of progress report, a five-year progress report, uh, of our progress against the comprehensive plan. But I do think it's time we get together and possibly set a new set, new set goals that the city, that the, uh, city staff can work towards over the next five years. I would ask that, uh, we also include the chairperson of the Waterworks Board, the Airport Board, EDC Board, and the Community Improvement Board, and the Parks Board, in this, in the strategic planning session along with the mayor's city council. I will have a consultant come in and help guide the process over the day and a half. We will, I promise that we will provide breakfast and lunch, uh, not dinner, because we'll get out by four on the first day, and possibly by noon or one o'clock the second. So I would ask that, uh, if you guys are available on July twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, if not, provide me some alternate dates. Um, I know that Commissioner Fettis, I think you're only available till August sometime, so that's what I'm trying to...
I'm good.
Okay, you know...
Everybody good with twenty-sixth to twenty-seventh?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm gonna bring on, uh, Mike Mowry, he's a PhD with SGR Consulting. This is what they do for a living, they're very good at it, and so he will help us steer that process. Uh, he has been provided a copy of the comprehensive plan, a copy of our annual reports, and a copy of the progress report, so he has a lot to begin with, and then we can work from there.
So you, are you just asking for the dates right now?
Yes. I, I think everyone's available on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh.
So is there a, there's no, uh, there's no action that we need to take, just make sure everybody's on board with this and that they're available on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh? Okay, so that's direction of the staff to go ahead and schedule it and, uh, post it. Great, thank you, I think that'll be a, a very productive meeting. Uh, item eleven, board appointments starting with...
I have none, sir.
I have actually two that I need to remove, because I inadvertently, by mistake, appointed two, so I think I, I need to remove them, Amanda, correct?
Yeah, but since, uh, since there was a motion, I think it needs a motion to remove them from, from the board.
Oh, so wait till the end.
Yeah, wait till, he, he need to come back, he needs to remove somebody. Okay.
Elva Munoz to the Library Advisory Board, and Norman Ruseff reappoint to the Museum Advisory Board.
None. Um, I'm gonna appoint, reappoint David Day to the Construction Board Engineer of Adjustments and...
and appeals. I'm going to appoint Ron Lozano to the golf course advisory board. Ida Villarreal to the Keep Harlingen Beautiful Board, Narciso Viella to the veterans advisory board. Abel Castaneda the third to the downtown improvement board and then Robert Leftwich to the TIF board.
To the what board?
TIF, the, was it the tax? The tax increment financing reinvestment zone, TIF.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the board appointments?
Some of.
Um, I had one more. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, wait, no, go ahead. Well, no, go ahead. Because I, I get a question. I can't appoint that one unless he rescinds it, right?
I need to ask a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, hell listen, maybe you can help us here, but I think the motion can include to remove those people from those two boards that you mentioned and also to appoint all the people that you have mentioned, if that's okay.
Okay. I thought we had a motion and a second to approve the appointments.
Yes.
I, I have, I have a question though. Your golf, uh, appointment to the golf course, is he still banned from the golf course? I understand he was banned from the golf course and from what I understand, he's not. He just, um, from what, when I spoke to him, I believe he was just playing the other day. Okay, I just want to make sure we're not appointing somebody that's not able to step on the property.
Well, Ron, are you able to go to the golf course?
I'm there almost daily. I was there today.
Okay, make sure.
I've seen him there, so I guess he's okay.
Okay, let's, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
A post.
All right, what's the action that you want to take now?
So I just need to remove, um, from the.
You're going to, you're going to remove, uh, the Keish Posani?
Posani Dishka? Is that how you pronounce it? And, uh, remove Elvia Donaldson.
From what boards?
Uh, the, Elvia Donaldson is the. Harlingen Public Library Board. Elvia Donaldson and Dishka Posani was going to be removed from the Harlingen, Healthy Harlingen Advisory Board. And then.
And I was going to, now that they're removed, I can, I can appoint Diksha Posani to the Healthy Harlingen Advisory Board.
Who?
The same.
Yeah, well, just basically, because he didn't have a, a spot available.
Yes, sir.
Dishka?
I didn't, I didn't hear.
Oh, her name was Viksha Posani for the Healthy Harlingen Advisory Board.
Okay.
You removed her. And you're putting her on.
Because I didn't have any.
He didn't have a slot. He didn't have a slot.
Oh, okay.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, these are boards that can, they can remove, they can remove them? Okay. And, all right, is there other action to take? Okay, let's go on into item twelve, which is executive closed session on the following items. A pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five fifty-one point oh eight seven one to discuss and deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that the city of Harlingen has received from a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have, locate, stay or expand in or near the city and with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations related to project Devil Stack. B Attorney Consultation pursuant to section five fifty-one point oh seven one two, Texas Government Code, to provide legal advice and counsel in connection with the city's rights, duties, privileges and obligations in connection with the Commercial Electricity Service Agreement with EXA and subsequent ancillary and nodal-based adjustment billing arising out of the February twenty twenty-one winter storm and related legal matters. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to meet with our attorney and with our economic development advisors regarding projects and, and other matters in executive session. There are two action, potential action items that we'll return and call when we were, afterward completed the executive sessions. Thank you.
Yeah, Dan's gonna stay. Dan's gonna stay for right.
All right, we are out of executive session at 7:01 PM. I'm going to add up 13 consideration possible action regarding the provision or approval of economic incentives to Project Double Stack. I don't really think you need to present anything further.
Okay.
Is there...
Some moved.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the economic incentives to Project Double Stack is presented. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Item 14 is consideration of possible action if appropriate regarding the payment of electricity invoices issued to the city by GEXA for various charges arising out of the February 2021 winter storm.
Mayor Commissioners, staff has recommended that we select payment option to 19 payments totaling $34,935.86. Again, that's 19 payments and staff who submit those payments under protest. And that's what staff has recommended.
Is there...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our agenda, so we are adjourned. Thank you all for all your help. Thank you.